Number one on the agenda, two thousand seventeen dash sixteen, Dr. of the two thousand seventeen political calendar.
Move to oversight committee?
Okay, let's just move forward, oversight committee. Councilor King. Yes, yes, Councilor King.
Is there any specific reasons for you to be asking?
I believe that there were some items that we wanted to discuss.
Oh, okay.
So, we're going to do it.
No problem, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so that will be in oversight committee. Thank you.
Number two on the agenda, two thousand seventeen dash zero one seven, confirmation. Quincy City Council give, I confirm the appointment of Michael P. Clarity to Quincy Housing's Board of Directors. His appointment is expected immediately and will run through first Monday in February two thousand twenty-two.
Councilor King.
I believe this requires a voice vote, like it's a roll call, pass, say the name.
You don't have to say the name, you can say yes, but we will do a roll call.
Okay, so it would be, I would like to.
It's a confirmation.
Right, I would like to move the passage to this particular matter, and if I could, on the motion.
Councilor King.
Thank you. Mike Clarity, who's, Michael Clarity is sitting in the front row here. For, I presume maybe one of the councilors knows. Michael, he's current board member on the Quincy Housing Authority. I jumped in during what was a difficult time, I believe, for the agency. That's my words, not his, but. And he's, I think he's done a lot to help stabilize the housing authority. He's someone who works hard on behalf of the folks who live in public housing. Having lived in public housing himself, I know that he appreciates the importance of treating folks with the respect and dignity that they deserve. And making sure that their housing reflects those same values. And he's worked in this field for many, many years. He's a consummate professional, professional when it comes to public housing. I think he's a great asset on that board. And it's with a great honor that I would move the passage to this. And not to mention he's a wonderful resident. I don't know what that does, I'm already awarded five. But, yes, I would move the passage to the confirmation of the mayor's.
Motion confirmed by Councilor King, seconded by Councilor King, and on the motion. Great, Madam President, you call the role?
Councilor King.
Yes.
Councilor Proff. Councilor Vaughn.
Yes.
Councilor King.
Yes.
Council Harris. Council LaFars. Council Liang.
Yes.
Council Halmuti.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Six members.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. For service. The next item on the list.
Number three on the agenda, two thousand seventeen dash zero two four, appropriation for one hundred fifty-nine thousand five hundred twenty-five year projects for recruit.
Uh, which should wait for me? Okay, motion to move finance. And, Councilor King. I, great, great to move finance, thank you.
Next on the agenda, number four, two thousand seventeen dash zero warning. Be it resolved. Having convened in an open meeting on Monday, February sixth, two thousand seventeen, prior to the closing date.
Motion to waive the meeting, by Councilor King?
No, I don't make that one.
In accordance with the charter, by law, the ordinance has voted to authorize superintendent schools to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority a statement of interest.
Motion agreed by Council Liang. Thank you, Council Liang. Uh, I believe, uh, I believe the.
Councilors, this is something that the council has entertained in the past while the projects, you know, the school buildings. It's a statement of interest sent on to the Massachusetts School Building Authority. And this particular project is intended, or hopeful, to do a significant roof replacement at North Quincy High School. Primarily the door, the annex in the back, and the full boiler replacement in the Parker Elementary Schools. The school committee has acted on it and would ask the group favorably to authorize the present with that letter to the, to the authority.
Thank you, uh, thank you. I also want to acknowledge Superintendent Kirk Kraspar was here this evening and supported these measures as well, so, thank you for coming, Dutch Kraspar. Is there a motion? Yes, Councilor King.
Just to be certain, this is actually the first step in the process, correct? It is. Tonight does not involve the appropriation of funds, but simply authorizing the statutory formula, the presentation to the, to the authority of the statement. These are two separate orders, I'd be happy to, on the first, approve both two thousand seventeen dash eighteen.
Okay, motion approved by Councilor King, seconded by Council Vaughn, on the motion. Yes.
Thank you, Madam President, I just wanted to just ask a few quick questions on this one. Do you have, I know you're doing a statement of interest to the MSBA, do you have an approximation of where this is going to be for amount of, of roof replacement at North Quincy High School? Proximation of what would be the reimbursement from the MSBA, or if you split the statement of interest in and then you get that information back?
The latter, we put the statement in and received that information back. But I can tell you that in-house, Gary Condon, the director of engineering in our department, it's parts from ten thousand six hundred fifty feet of roofing for North Quincy High School, with the parts costing two hundred and forty thousand dollars. But adding to that, dealing with the rooftop units, ventilation booths, the numerous highlights in that building, will put it in excess of the two hundred fifty thousand minimum part consideration by the authority.
And to take it a step further, I know we've done a really next job with the window replacements we've done in the last two years. The place looks phenomenal. When was the last time this roof was renovated, or when was the last time this was made work done?
The, these particular sections of the roof were over the cafeteria in the Hester Plaza, and over the odd sections and such of the, of the annex, we'll call it. And they are, will be a regional construction of that building in the late seventies, nineteen seventy-eight, nineteen seventy-nine.
So it's been well past there?
Well, past, so we, the wear and tear of that is pretty significant.
Wasn't there some rain damage in the, in the, um, the basketball court area? Was there a leak going on over there over the last year?
Not through the gym roof, but through one of these adjacent roofs, yes.
Okay.
A patent fair roof that has a patch foot, but it's, it's really, it's a sinking ship. There's significant water barriers as well, these areas in its own building.
Thank you, I just happen to see some of them that are very much needed, because Quincy High School on the other side of the city is obviously a new facility, two thousand and ten, so, I think the balance of getting open North Quincy would be great. And I know that the board council is not here right now, but I know that it would be really nice for North Quincy to, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Council Vaughn, uh, Council Liang.
Thank you, Madam President, I know the board council is very excited about this school improvement. So, the work you guys do across the city, our schools are obviously ever very much appreciated, not only outside the schools, but inside the schools, this technology as well. It's a work in progress, I think, with Adam Fattig, that comes in front of us when we renovate the school. That being said, I know that you said this is the first step in the process, can you just explain to me, that's the best case scenario? You know, you go out, you do the application today, what are you looking for as far as either months or weeks, that you then come back in front of us with possible estimates that we have to look at?
I believe in the end of February, the authority will take this, well, mid-February, this table we received, they were administrative for processing. Then the staff from the School Building Authority will come out to the site and action themselves with their engineers, assess the condition of the facilities, same thing they do at the Parker School of Boiler Room. They will seek to either agree or disagree or debate on the merits as presented in the statement, and will make a recommendation to the building authority. I can pretty firmly tell you, it's not work that would be happening this year, if anything, it would be more likely the summer of eighteen.
So you're saying that this, if this does go through, then we're not going to see a proposal or an estimate in front of us this year?
When we get back the information from the School Building Authority, we will of course process it as quickly as possible and present it to the council. It is, it is conceivable that this year, well, certainly this year, somebody's thinking it's November, certainly in two thousand seventeen, we'll be back to the next step in the process. But it's, it boots in the ground of actual undertaking the construction, it will likely be two thousand and eighteen.
I think it sounds good, I'm very excited to see that, so thank you for the work you did, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Council Liang. Anyone else who should be aware, Council King.
Thank you, Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Is this work, I see that the boilers are on that, the boiler, heating and ventilation systems, is that work that was affected by Honeywell contract?
There were modifications to the building system by the Honeywell project, but they were not replacements at that time.
What was the work that Honeywell did that was a?
Primarily control systems, I believe they did the most of all, boiler. I won't say cut the patch, they did replace the control system, but it's not, it was not even fitted, it's not well functioning, that will have a meeting after tomorrow morning.
And why is that, what's the issue with the functionality?
We're not, that's one of the reasons for tomorrow's meeting, whether it be a commission issue at the time, or a wiring issue, we're trying to decipher that as we go to, to get us through this anticipated next heating season, until such time as the replacements are done.
Is there any fear that it's, that it's not going to get us through the remainder of the winter?
No, it'll survive, we'll get through this year, and certainly get through next year, we have Dave Scott and others in the department, but, you know, it's, it's tired, it's old, it's, the controls are an issue. It's more of a control issue than it is a physical plant issue, as far as operationally. But again, they are old, so they are not as efficient as they could be or should be, and they are at or surpass their useful life, and at some point, they will fail.
So when we're, so when we're talking about replacement, renovation, or modification, with, of the heating system, ventilation system, the boilers, we're specifically broad at this age?
That's the buzz language from the regulations, yes.
Okay, and that's.
It would be our intention to do a replacement.
So, all right, that's, so it's our, it's our intention to do a replacement, however, the way the process works, I would imagine, I don't recall when we did the windows, what that process was, but going through Sterling and Central. You essentially, you file, they do an assessment as to what they believe the necessary work and requirements are for, and then you make a decision if that's how you're going to proceed. Is that similar when you're talking about physical plant situations?
They're similar, but they're different, there's two different tracks through the building authority, there's the core programs, which are the builder replacements, and there's newer programs called accelerated repair program. It's more of a streamlined process, less cumbersome, but there is still a bureaucracy to it, but it, it is more timely process.
But, but that's the way the process went, they'll, they'll come out, or a third party assessor will come out, take a look at what they think is needed, and then that's kind of how the application and procedure is based on what they find the needs are? We're saying our intention is replacement, but if they come out and they find the need is a control issue, or repair rather than replacement, that would be their recommendation, we'd have to decide whether or not to move forward with their recommendation?
That would be their recommendation, because that's when the negotiation between the two sides begins. You know, you obviously make the argument, it makes no sense to put a half million dollars in controls into a thirty-five year old boiler. It's more economical to change it upfront, and beyond doing more, more data control systems with the functionality of the capital systems. And that's why this language is broad, so whichever ultimately becomes the direction that you go, it's covered in this vote.
Right, that's why I say, and that's why it's overly broad, it's because if you want to take the widest approach, and it happens to narrow it down through the process, then it does, but you're not limiting yourself.
Correct, and ultimately, if we don't agree on what is the course of action, their determination really affects their funding. You know, if they determine that it really just needs to operate in controls, but we're intent on new boiler, we can do the new boiler, they can't stop us, they're just not going to contribute funds towards that, like they would towards the other estimates.
And you're saying, is it a thirty-five year old?
I believe that's yesterday, uh, actually, no, nineteen ninety-three and nineteen ninety-four, they were within, not quite yet, but, but they do have leaking boiler sections, the valves are failed, control problems.
What's the natural life of the boiler? I, I recall when we went through the Sterling process, and I may be mistaken, and you may not know, but I thought that boiler was like eighty years old.
Like it was, and some of the boilers are actually formerly coal burning ones, that were later converted to oil and have since been converted to gas. They're not very efficient, these aren't that old, but they're, they're at, again, by the fact that they're actually physically leaking, they're rotted through the cast type of walls, they're past their part.
And what's the, um, what's the lifespan that we anticipate from the boiler? Like when we go to the, the new high school, what's, what do we expect out of the boiler?
I believe that's dependent upon what they expect for manufacture, whether it's steam, or whether it's top lot, it's dependent upon the variables of installation.
Is all the honey money, honey money, gone?
Regrettably, it is.
But you didn't, but you, I believe you said the Honeywell was controls, it wasn't the replacement of the?
Correct.
And you anticipate we'll need to replace the controls, or you, is the hope going to be that we can replace the systems and they'll be able to mesh technologically with the controls?
The control system that was installed is not satisfactory, it would be replaced with a new boiler.
So then arguably, the money that we got in the settlement from Honeywell were covered things like, like that, so could we settle aside any money from that Honeywell settlement to cover such things?
It, we did, my predecessors did, as did the administration, but it's been expended a significant portion of which went to, to Quincy High School repairs already.
And would the anticipated funding source for this be bonding, or would it be general fund obligation that we would add to a budget under a different line item or in your tenure in the department?
I would leave that to my cabinet, but I believe the anticipation would be under bonding, and that way you're, you're paying out the cost of it during the benefit of it.
Arguably.
Arguably.
Because if we did that with the controls, it'd be less than ten years old, and we'd already be replacing them, and we have a bond that's, what, twenty years that we're paying for them after one second iteration.
Yes, but not sure the controls are actually designed to.
That's what I'm saying, theoretically, in terms of, that's the hope, is that?
Hope is not spotty, yeah.
Right, we bond out with the pain over the course of time, lifespan of a, of a particular item, whether it's a, you know, a fire truck, or a police cruiser, or a boiler, in this, in this sense. That's why it's always incredibly frustrating, disappointing, when we have something that doesn't meet that anticipated lifespan, and we're still paying for it, while we're also paying for the replacement.
One other challenge that just is, is systems getting more and more sophisticated, which means more chance for failure. Keep it simple, it's a good, good way to go, but unfortunately, it's not happening, the building control system.
Lastly, what, what's the highest and best reimbursement percentage that they give in this particular program?
I believe it's the sixty percent, but I'm not certain of that, again, this is unrelated to funding, I've not been at all in the position to investigate that at this point.
You just make the recommendations of what needs to be repaired?
All we do now is seeking the authority to make this admission to the, to the authority, seeking your authority to make it to the authority, and then the process begins.
Right, and, and, no, I understand that, it's, it's not something that I think the body's trying to say no to, but it's, I think, worth getting into it a little bit more than just simply saying yes, because once we say yes to this, which I anticipate doing, uh, once we say this, we're, you know, we're at the top of the slope, now we start to, you know, head down, and it's not as if in eight months, six months, when things have been negotiated, studies have been done, it comes back before us for a bond authorization, that we're really in a position at that point to say, nah, forget it, we don't think this work is valuable. Now, to me, now would be the time for this body, in its fiduciary capacity, to say to the administration, the school department, to your department, that no, we don't think that this would be a good expenditure of city resources.
Again, there is no expenditure here, this is simply authorizing the application process.
Right.
There are many stop points in the future on these particular projects. One is the project funding agreement, which isn't the bond authorization, it's just agreeing to or not agreeing to the deal that's struck with the authority.
But we don't, we don't do that.
The administration negotiates the deal based upon the state banks and the different formula that I replied, but it comes to the body, the state regulation requires that that agreement be approved by this body, the project funding agreement. Thereafter, it's separate vote on actually funding.
Don't those usually come in with the bond authorization and the agreement?
Well, the agreement has to be first, so there's nothing to bond, they may come in simultaneously, but they act through two separate steps, two separate votes.
Right, two separate votes, but they usually, my recollection is they usually come in, you know, number two on the agenda, number three on the agenda. Now, the only point I was making is, just that once we start the process, it's almost as if the body says, we're okay with the work, and then we'll talk about the cost later, that it's valuable to. And I'm not saying this particular project isn't valuable, I'm going to support moving forward, but I think we, we don't have the, the deep discussions about it at the outset.
Correct, but I think it's almost impossible to, we don't have the information presented to you on the financials, until the studies are done, the negotiation is done, and the deal, tentative deal is struck. Any conversation about the financing before that is somewhat premature, other than to say, it will be costly, but not nearly as costly if we don't follow the program.
I look at it like when you sit down in order to steak, you want to know how much the steak costs before you, not after you eat it, and say, oh, really? That's how much, then you're, you're eating the steak, you pretty much have to pay for it, unless you're really quick.
Go with that.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, Madam President. Council King?
No, no.
Okay, uh, Madam President, you call the role?
Council King.
Yes.
Council Proff. Council Vaughn.
Yes.
Council King.
Yes.
Council Harris, Council LaFars, Council Liang.
Yes.
Council Halmuti.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
No, I made, that was for the first of the votes, it's the second one.
Yes, Council.
Thank you, Madam President, I would look like to motion approval of order two thousand seventeen dash nineteen. I do want to give another, now, another way of viewing this stuff, to be clear, is if it comes back to us, and you don't think it's appropriate fiscally, you can vote it down, absolutely. There's another, a way of looking at this would be, if we were applying for a grant someplace that required a vote on the application approving the mayor, or the Mr. Heinz, to reform, and be voting in that mail, almost, and say, yeah, go ahead and do this. But I want to be very clear, I mean, if this comes back, and we think it's fiscally irresponsible, and certainly vote it down, this is not quite as in steep incline as my colleague, I think, who's indicating, but, but again, I would move passage. This is what.
Motion approved by Council King, seconded by Council Vaughn. Uh, discussion on motion, any? Okay, seeing none, Madam President.
Council King.
Yes.
Council Proff. Council Vaughn.
Yes.
Council King.
Yes.
Council Harris, Council LaFars, Council Liang.
Yes.
Council Halmuti.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilors, very much, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, checks on the agenda, two thousand seventeen dash zero two zero, we have pulled that from the agenda at this time, it is under review by Council Harris.
And then move, then move to the one, one.
No, thank you. Second. Second, Councilor King. I, again, yes. Yes.
Thank you. Number seven on the agenda, two thousand seventeen dash zero two one, ordinance amending Title Seventeen zoning, various changes towards B zoning. Be determined that the city's zoning ordinance be amended and replaced in selected languages followed. In Title Seventeen, City of Quincy zoning ordinance, thirty-two dot zero district.
Wait, wait.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Courage, courage, Councilor King.
If I may, on the motion, uh, very, on the ordinance, or I guess on the motion, right here. Move to, move to committee, yeah, move to pass. Not looking for passage tonight, I don't know why, I forgot how to do this after seven years, but, um, looking to refer this to ordinance committee, refer it to the planning board, for consideration of the asset, it can advertise, so we can start the, the clock and the process on this. I've introduced two ordinance changes, both that would affect residential B districts. The purpose of this, and, and I'll try and be brief, the purpose of this is to, to take a harder look at what is being done, what type of housing is being created in residential B districts. Right now, our zoning allows for zoning calls for single-family residences to be built, so we have Residence A, Residence B, Residence C. Residence A, you can only build single-family housing. We have single-family, two-family, and multifamily, those are the three descriptive types of housing that are built in City of Quincy, according to our zone. Residence A, you can only build single-family. Residence B, you can build single-family, two-family, and multifamily. And in Residence C, you can build all three as well. If you look at it, kind of the hierarchy of the way it is, to me, it seems as though medium-density multi-unit isn't appropriate in a lot of the residential B zones. If you look at the zoning map, there are some, there are some neighborhoods that are encompassed as, or zoned as Residence B, and you would look at those, and you would say, no way should there be multifamily housing built in those areas. Because they're predominantly single-family residential neighborhoods. And I think it, it doesn't, you know, medium-density multi-unit housing makes sense in certain areas of the city, like downtown, close to MBTA stations, residential C areas that have been zoned for this. It doesn't make sense in areas that are predominantly single-family home neighborhoods, family, family neighborhoods. The, for me, it was brought most recently to light by some proposals in and around West Street neighborhood. Although West Street itself may make sense as a residential B district, the subsidiary neighborhoods off of West Street in that area, it doesn't make sense, predominantly single-family residential areas. And quite frankly, this is about protecting, ensuring the nature and the character of our residential neighborhoods, our single-family residential neighborhoods. I think over the last several years, the quality of life in some of these areas have been threatened by overdevelopment, more and more. I find particularly, I don't know if it's the same for the other councils, I suspect it is, that my day-to-day issues that I'm hearing from constituents about and I'm working on, have to do with development, has to do with traffic, has to do with, think pedestrian safety, things of that nature, that I think are, are related to the development boom that we've seen in the city. So there's two pieces of legislation here tonight, one is a moratorium that would call for a halt to any multi-units being built in a residential B neighborhood. So, what that would entail, or why I envision that would entail, is in a residential B, you could continue to build single-family homes, you could continue to build two-family homes, but what you couldn't build is higher-density multi-unit buildings. So anyone who lives in a residential B, you want to add a porch, you want to, you know, you want to add a, an addition to your house, to make your, your own, single-family home bigger, or your two-family bigger, you could still do that, this wouldn't prevent anyone from doing anything like that. But it would prevent anyone who's buying into a residential B property to tear down a single-family home, tear down a, a two-family, and put up multiple townhouses, or a big condo building. The, so there's two pieces, the other one, the zoning change, would say that residential B isn't a desirable location for multifamily, medium-density development. I did add, in that legislation, I add a third or a fourth category that we don't currently have, which is a three-family. So, some zoning codes have single-family, two-family, three-family, and then multi-family is anything over three-family. In our zoning code, we have single-family, two-family, then multifamily is anything two units and over. I think it's worthy of a consideration by the body to say, maybe in residential B areas, which is the middle, residential A, residential B, residential C, that a three-family should be the limit. That, that three units should be the, the limit of what we have in a residential B district. If you want to have multi-units, if you want to have higher density, that's more for residential C districts. And I would encourage everyone to take a look at the maps of the zoning, the GIS, the zoning overlay. This, and there's pockets of residential B all across the city, but predominantly where I think this would be the most meaningful, and where you have the highest proportion of residential B zoning, is in West Quincy. of residential B zoning, is in West Quincy, North Quincy, and Quincy Point. You look at the map, you can, there are just huge red blocks of neighborhoods that are residential B. And if you just, you know, throw a dart on the map, look at a neighborhood, more often than not, you're going to see that that neighborhood that's zoned residential B is predominantly a single-family neighborhood. And you would never think that it would make sense that a multi-unit, you know, more than, more than two, two, currently, more than two residential units with medium-density multi-units would go into that neighborhood. It just wouldn't be consistent with the nature and the character of some of these, um, single-family neighborhoods. So I think this is a reasonable change to zoning. I think, uh, at the very least, this is a conversation we should be having at the council with the development that's happening in the city. I think it's a good opportunity, presents a good, this presents a good opportunity for us to have a discussion, to, uh, to kind of debate, engage in this issue with, with the help of the planning department, the planning board, the administration, and the public in general, whether they be builders or residents in the, in the city, to kind of have a broader discussion. Maybe we don't change residents B, maybe we say we like it the way it is, maybe we change it, maybe we change it to something different than what I offered here, but, but I think we should be having this debate up here, and my intention is to, is to make some changes to, uh, what we allow for residential B. So with that, I would move this to the board's committee, as I said, as we go about it. The planning board, we advertise it, um...
Okay, motion to move that, motion to move ordinance made by Council Calhoun, seconded by Council Liang, all those paid, great. Thank you, Council Calhoun.
Yeah, wait for reading on the next one, 2017-022, wait a reading as we move to ordinance and send to the planning board and public affairs.
Okay, motion by Council Calhoun, seconded by Council Liang, yeah, all those paid, great. Thank you. Next item on the card.
Number nine on the agenda, 2016-074, ordinance amending Chapter 375 zoning, Section 9.4, special permit, section 9.9 through 9.11, special permit. Edith Dean?
Wait, read.
Motion, wait, read, by Council Calhoun, Council Calhoun, motion.
If I may, um, this, the next two items, and I would, I guess we can't take them out at the same time, but the next two items are, um, they come by way of the Oversight Committee, which never actually voted on a recommendation one way or the other, but we did have several, I want to say two or three hearings about this particular issue at the, um, the initial request of Counselor DeBona and Counselor Finn, who had asked that the Oversight Committee get into the issue of the underground economy, um, and wage enforcement, debt prevention, before the voting. We, if you recall, we had a couple, as I said, several hearings before the Oversight Committee, we took testimony from the public on several occasions, we, um, had members of the community from all different aspects of who is affected by the issue. We heard from workers who are affected by this, we heard from, um, construction companies that were in support of making a change, we heard from construction companies that were not in support of making this change, uh, we heard from folks from the Attorney General's office, uh, who are tasked with enforcing the state laws that this really speaks to, and we also heard from the insurance industry, we had several members in the insurance industry. And really what this is about, just the bottom line is, this is about requiring, this is the first one, special permit, is about requiring general contractors to be responsible for the performance, in a legal sense, of the subcontractors that they hire and bring on a job. Um, and this would give the City of Quincy Building Department added enforcement authority that we don't currently have, in terms of making sure that state and federal laws are adhered to on work sites that are operating under a special permit in the City of Quincy. So there was some discussion at the last Oversight Committee hearing about whether it was too draconian of some of the enforcement aspects, worked with some outside, the Calligan, if you recall, they had a representative here, and they gave us a red-line version, which I think they sent to all the council and would be part of the public record. I worked with Mr. Timmons, and some of the concerns that he had raised, and I'll actually, I'll talk to Jim in a moment, and he can speak to that, we, we came up with, um, an amendment that I'll offer tonight, that I believe everyone received, and it should be in the packets. Uh, it's an amendment that reflects the changes that Mr. Timmons had sought, um, and while it, so really the main thing that it does is, it gives the building director, uh, more discretion of what the remedy is. So if you find that someone's violating, um, he's essentially a special permit now by not, by not appropriately, um, not appropriately following state general laws as a related construction site, and, um, employment, you know, workers' compensation, insurance, and things like that, that the building department, rather than simply shutting the entire job down as a initial step, would have the authority to request that a subcontractor be kicked off the job site, removed from the job site, and if that doesn't happen, um, then the general contractor runs the risk at the building department's discretion, given a certain amount of time, of shutting the whole job down. So it, it's more of a staggered approach, essentially gives the building director the same amount of authority without prescribing what steps he needs to take, at which, at which point, right? Generally, you think that's a...
Well, that's a very fair summary of what's occurred here. Essentially, Council Calhoun, she turned the ordinance over to me, and I had, um, pretty great concerns about, um, potential ramifications of some of the provisions, so we were able to work through it together. Ms. Manning was kind enough, at my request, to provide me with some of the tapes of the prior public hearings, so I could confirm some of the concerns. And essentially, the way the clean version now reads, I provided Councillors, um, all day, a bit late, and I apologize for that, but I provided copies of the clean version in the edited version, um, that resulted from my discussions with Council Calhoun, with whom I worked, as he was the drafter of the ordinance. And essentially, as he just summarized, what we've done is, is cleaned up the language a bit, so that a job will not end up shut down for any prolonged period of time. We're assuming that by notifying a particular contractor, if we're able to confirm, not just confirm that somehow there's non-compliance, um, what will happen is that contractor will be notified by our building department that they're off the job, and, um, the general contractor will be contacted, and will look for expedited compliance. One of the somewhat cumbersome options in the first version was that the only right appeal was to the zoning board, and while Council Calhoun is absolutely correct, but generally, in order of the building inspector goes before the zoning board, there was a concern that that inherently created a five-minute delay. So we think what we've done is, um, met the, you know, the lawful objectives of this ordinance, which I know most of the Councillors spoke in favor during the public hearing, I heard, uh, the general consensus here, but we cleaned it up a bit, um, so that, uh, the impact of this is that whoever the wrongdoer is, is the party that we're really going after, and that we are correcting whatever the particular issue is, and hopefully not impacting a project. So my recommendation to you, um, is that the so-called clean version, as I've called it, um, that the amended version of the ordinance is one which can ensure that you pass with the right, so, vote it.
One, one quick point, um, Jim, just about advertising. The clerk just informed me that the first version was advertised on 3/24, which is not the version that's before us tonight for passage, that this current version, as it stands now, red-line or clean, however you want to say, has not been advertised. And there was some concern that perhaps you couldn't pass this this evening because it was not advertised. Is that your feeling or no?
Well, an amendment to an already advertised, previously advertised, um, ordinance does not necessarily have to be re-advertised, um, it depends on the nature of the change. Um, I don't believe that these changes are, um, of the sort that would prompt an additional advertisement. However, if there's a concern on the part of Madam Clerk, and I'll defer to Council Calhoun, so I'm not quite certain about timing, I mean, it's always best to use a cautious approach when talking about a change of this nature. But I believe that the, um, the amendments that we've made have actually been, um, consistent with what was advertised, and it's, it's a little narrower than the somewhat broad-sweeping priority and stuff.
That's fine. I have a problem with that. Does anyone else, yes, Council Finn?
Before I get into it, I, I would say it would be an absolute bad precedent to advertise. Again, I mean, this suggestion that we would have to advertise every little amendment that we make, if everything comes up here, I want to, this is not really a substantive change per se, and it was really part of what was discussed that, you know, again, in an appropriately advertised public hearing tomorrow, but, um, I would be happy to pass it this evening, but I wanted to just make, um, make sure I'm clearly understanding this, is that during the public hearing, there was some interest, so to speak, of people who were speaking, who suggested that this should only apply to subcontractors, and that...
Suggested what, I'm sorry?
There was a suggestion, almost, that this ordinance should only apply to subcontractors, somehow general contractors should be exempt from this ordinance. This change does not affect that at all. This actually gives you, gives the inspector greater, um, um, flexibility, basically, to target specifically the problem in some regards. And if it is the general contractor, then clearly, um, to use your phrase, when is it, the expanded, um, um, focus onto the general, in other words, holding, general, a general contractor will be held accountable for practices. Because again, one of the things that this is meant to address is that there are certain types of contracting or subcontracting practices that exist out there, that general contractors oftentimes turn a blind eye to, not all of them. And, and let's make one thing perfectly clear, this is not a union issue. In fact, at the public hearing, there was a non-union job coming to speak in support of this. This is really meant to protect the people who play by the rules against the people who don't. But it would be absolutely meaningless if it doesn't have sufficient teeth if a general contractor is engaging in these, what are essentially illegal practices. This does not in any way mitigate that at this point, it just makes it, um, as I'm reading your reasoning on some of the changes, it makes it so that you're not punishing the good subcontractors or people on, on the job, and you're not delaying necessarily a project unnecessarily.
That's correct. I, I was more inclined toward a, well, referred to as a narrower, kind of, route, just going right out of a malefactor. Council Calhoun, um, he really converted me by indicating that one of his potential concerns here was the types of general contractors who just grab the lowest bidder, and frequently in certain circumstances, as in smaller type projects, it's these low-bidding subcontractors who are playing games in the payment wages. So he felt very strongly that if we were not to include the GC in the, um, responsibility chain here, that that would be a mistake, and that by including the GC, um, will get the expedited, uh, you know, correction.
Yeah, the expedited correction. No, I, it's absolutely critical.
Yeah, it corrects everything, because once the building inspector goes out there and takes action, um, we don't necessarily want to have one of our building inspectors married to a particular site, so this is going to get the GC right in the door and say, "Look, get this straightened out," because Council Calhoun is also relying heavily on Chapter 149, the kind of prevailing theme in that chapter, that the general contact is responsible for everyone on the site.
No, and, and again, I support that, and I just want to make certain that this achieves it, and it sounds like it does.
Yes, yes, it does, you know.
And, and I wanted to, again, thank, um, Council Calhoun, again, for all this work and relationships, and bringing this really together to discuss this. Uh, it took off with such speed, moving with us, and then the Oversight Committee to investigate this, and the next meeting, we had ordinance, so, you know, it was pretty quick, but, but again, it is tricky. And again, Mr. Timmons, we appreciate your work, and more than other work, to try to integrate this into some of their work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Council Finn. Anyone else wishing to speak? Council Calhoun.
So I would, um, I would offer the amended version as a substitute to the pre-existing version, and ask, I'd move the passage of the amended version, I'll pass that to you. I, I just, two things I failed to mention previously, um, just this past last week, on Thursday, as if there was any question of whether or not this was a real issue, and whether or not it was happening in Quincy, affecting workers and job sites in Quincy, the AG's office had fined a contractor who was working on a Quincy housing authority project $300,000 last week, and this was a subcontractor, asbestos removal company, who the president had previously had a different, now-defunct asbestos removal company, which in 2008, they had fined him, the AG's office had fined him, for not following these regulations that we're talking about. They, and this is what we heard in the testimony in the committee hearing, is that these companies, they don't pay things, they don't pay a regular wage to their employees, which they're contractually obligated to do, they're not paying workers' compensation for their employees, and when an employee gets hurt at a job site, and there's no workers' compensation, they go to this, um, they go into this pool of funds, they can collect workers' compensation from a pool of funds, from everybody else in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts who does pay. You pay a little bit more, you pay your workers' compensation for your employees, and you pay a little bit more, because invariably, there's going to be somebody who's not paying for their workers. And all the businesses that play by the rules are then at a disadvantage to the businesses that don't play by the rules. And it's no more a problem, it's, it's no greater of a problem anywhere else than is the construction industry, because those, those differences in overhead, if you're not paying workers' compensation, or paying your, your employees the proper wage, you, you can't compete with a guy who doesn't have that kind of overhead. So they're, they're getting on more jobs, uh, and they're not safe, and they're not taking care of their workers, and this is what that does, but I just, I thought it was appropriate to raise it, that the AG's office just fined somebody last week who was working on a Quincy housing authority job for doing this very thing that we've been talking about. So I would urge passage of this, I think it's a, it would be a welcome addition to our, our toolbox in, in, um, the building department enforcing regulations of the state and local level.
Okay, motion approved by Counselor, uh, Calhoun, seconded by Counselor Finn, on motion. Madam Clerk, Calhoun.
Council Finn?
Yes.
Council Crowe?
Yes.
Council John?
Yes.
Council Finn?
Yes.
Council Harris?
Yes.
Council Liang?
Yes.
Council Calhoun?
Yes.
President News?
Yes.
Next item?
Next item on the agenda, number 10, 2016-137, ordinance amending Title 17 to amending section, section 15.2, entitled Wage Debt Prevention. Edith Dean?
Wait, read.
Okay, motion agreed, Council Calhoun.
This also comes out of the committee hearings of the Oversight Committee prompted by Counselor Finn and Counselor DeBona, in the testimony that we heard from members of, all the same, same issues. This one specifically goes to, um, wages, and whether or not folks are being paid as employees, or, um, one of the, the common unfortunate practices in the industry is calling someone, um, what do you call them, like a 1099, yeah, like a...
Subcontractor.
Subcontractor within the company, when really they're on the payroll, um, or should be on payroll of the company. So that, that's what this does, um, this is the wage debt prevention, and no one seemed to have a problem with this when we, when we rolled it out of the Oversight Committee. when we, when we rolled it out of the Oversight, out of the industry. Folks who weighed in, they were more concerned with the ordinance. I would, there's been no changes to this, it's been advertised. I would, I would move passage to, ask my colleagues to-
Motion by Counselor Palucci, seconded by Counselor DeBonner. On motion.
Independent contracts.
That's it.
Independent contracts. Okay. Anyone wishing to speak? Okay, seeing none. Madam Clark, call the roll.
Counselor Kane?
Yes.
Counselor Pross?
Yes.
Counselor DeBonner?
Yes.
Counselor Finn?
Yes.
Counselor LeFard?
Yes.
Counselor Lee.
Yes.
Counselor Palucci?
Yes.
President.
Yes.
Be advised.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Palucci, for your work on those. That was a lot of work together. I appreciate those who showed up to testify, and those who showed up here this evening in support of both ordinances, and thank you for all your efforts. Thank you. Next item, Madam Clark.
Number eleven on the agenda, 2017, they, they were two free hit for one thousand one.
Okay, motion approved by Counselor Pross, seconded by Counselor LeFard. On motion, Madam Clark.
Counselor Kane?
Yes.
Counselor Pross?
Yes.
Counselor LeFard?
Yes.
Counselor Finn?
Yes.
Counselor LeFard?
Yes.
Counselor Lee?
Yes.
Counselor Palucci?
Yes.
President.
Yes.
Be advised.
Thank you. And that finishes our formal agenda for this evening. Next, we'll move to approval of previous meeting minutes. The January twenty-third minutes are before you. Is there a motion to approve? Motion approved by Counselor Liang, seconded by Counselor DeBonner. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Yeah, I said it. Communications and reports from the mayor, other city offices, city boards. No, either or, none? Great. Moving right along. Unfinished business from the seating room? Any? Great. Reports of committees. Finance, zero. Finance. Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Madam President. We have pending a committee, Counselor two zero one seven dash six, which is an appropriation for $60,000 to the Health Department for pass control. I see joining us here this evening in the audience, the Health Commissioner, Andrew Shealy, so we welcome him through to the microphone, and he'll give us some perspective on some of our story we have to do this evening. Great, forward, yours.
Mr. Shealy, thank you.
Thank you very much. It was a pleasure to come forward with a question. As you know, back in the budget cycle that we just did for 2017, I requested $20,000 for pass control. The City of Quincy was taking a very unusual step to actually-